Okay, I would like to call the Board of Education meeting of August 21st, 2017 to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Costello?
Here.
Ms. Sonia Ellis?
Here.
Ms. Gert? Ms. Nolan?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
Madam President?
Here. And I'd like to acknowledge that Casey Pierce, our student board member, is also with us. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance place.
The first item on our agenda is the Strategic Plan Report. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Our first is a back-to-school update. I'm going to ask members of Cabinet to step forward and sit towards the front. But presenting with me will be Melanie Maedel from Human Resources and Dr. Jeff King from our Chief Operations Officer. Just to give you a quick update. So we did it. It's amazing. Overnight, suddenly, 40,000 kids show back up between our doors and we accept them. And all the teachers were in place, all the principals were in place. And by all accounts, it was a really good first day of school. On the vaccination front or exclusion front for vaccinations and physical exams, leading up to the start of school, there was a point in time where we had, I think, 1,200 students who were still awaiting their physicals and immunizations and would have been excluded. We had a health fair, we had additional communication. So at the end of the first day of school, 702 students still did not meet the requirements. We still allowed them to come into school, but they were told that they could not return on Thursday. By Thursday, that was down to 332. And we're still collecting numbers from today, but at this point, we are well below 200. And I expect that we'll have those wrapped up in short order. So that's where we are on the health and immunization front. Ms. Maedel, staffing?
Okay, staffing update. So the focus this evening is on 830 elementary, general, and dual-language classrooms. Our district average is at 23.2, and our building averages range anywhere from 26.3 to 19. Right now, we have what we call our watch list of 30-plus or more. And in Kinder, we have four buildings that we're watching already have deployed paraeducators. For grade one, we have one building also deployed paraeducator. Grade two, we don't have any sitting in that range. Grade three, we have two buildings. Grade four, we have nine buildings. Grade five, eight, and grade six, 12 buildings. So they're grouped together, even though they may be on the 30-plus watch. Those buildings have elected to not do splits or have done another configuration. And that was with the teachers and the principals working together in their SD committee's school department teams. So depending on those scenarios, again, if principals are looking to add either support for paras and/or FTEs, full-time teacher, they are to submit an appeal, which some have. Some of those appeals have already been addressed and part of the staffing process. And then we are sticking to our paraeducator deployment as aligned with the ETA agreement with the numbers.
Our first day was a little rocky. Most of our concerns came from the end of the day where we have, unfortunately, buildings still putting students on buses they shouldn't be on. So that creates challenges for us at the end of the school day. Fortunately, we were able to recover from that. The following day, I don't think we had any of those on the second day. And the school I was helping out at, I know we were, our release, we were probably eight to 10 minutes faster the second day than the first day. And that's the typical progression for transportation as we start the school year. We did end up closing the call center. I guess I should back up. I don't know if you're all familiar, several years ago, we decided to establish a separate call center to route transportation calls through from buildings and parents so the office staff can focus on the drivers and the equipment on the street during the first couple of days. What we've typically done is run that for about a week. Actually, we closed it early on Friday in the third day because of the volume of calls was so small by Friday that we didn't need that extra support for the office. So that was a positive thing for them. In food service, if you recall, we moved packaging back into our facility. That went really well. Two production lines were up and running, and food was distributed to schools in a timely manner. Everything went really well with that restart there. Plant operations, obviously, their summer's very hectic with the work that goes on between cleaning the buildings, completing the construction projects, amongst many other things that occur during the summer that need to be addressed. Again, they did an outstanding job getting the schools ready. IS, the same thing. Equipment is still coming in because some of it was ordered later, some of the Title One equipment, et cetera. So that's still being distributed to schools. And then purchasing and warehousing, several complements from a lot of areas regarding the service they provided, getting teachers moved at the last minute that needed to be, that were changing locations, and distributing all the materials that we purchased, science program, ELL, et cetera. There was a lot of materials that went out, hundreds of pallets. So kudos to all the folks in operations. They all did an outstanding job doing what they needed to do to make sure everything's ready for the kids to come back.
Yeah, great teamwork. It was great teamwork.
Yeah, all the way around, it's been a great opening to the school year. We had a little bit of excitement today with, apparently, there was an eclipse or something that hit. So a lot of our schools participated and students were able to go out and observe the eclipse, depending on the local school. With that, though, that concludes our update on the opening of schools.
Okay, are there any questions? Casey?
Not a question. I just want to say, I want to give a shout-out to everyone in transportation because I drive myself now, but I was on the bus for a long time, and my little sister takes the bus. And I know that it can be a struggle at the beginning of the school year. So I can only imagine how hard it must be trying to get almost 40,000 kids from one place to another. So just, that's a lot of work, so good job, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, please send our thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next Strategic Plan Report is the Family and Community Engagement Update. I will let Mary Fergus introduce you to the presenters. This will be now, I think, an annual thing we're doing, isn't it, Mary?
Yes.
Yes. It's our second annual Family and Community Engagement Update.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to update you on the work of school and community relations and how we try to meet and eclipse the goals and priorities of our strategic plan. I'm Mary Fergus. I'm the Director of School and Community Relations, and I'm honored to be here tonight with Carla Jimenez, our Family and Community Engagement Coordinator, with Oak Hill Elementary School Principal Laura Allegria and Oak Hill parent Phil Novello, as well as Karen Stephen, I'm sorry, Farah Stephen, I have a friend named Karen Stephen. Farah Stephen, who is a U-46 parent leader. We are going to talk tonight about some of the family and community engagement strategies and how, as you know, the district's strategic plan measures our work via the Five Essential Survey. As a department, we also look at participation numbers, things like clicks and downloads and participation numbers at events, as well as engagement in traditional media and on social media. Our presentation will offer just an overview, of course, of our work. It doesn't encompass all that we do or the times that we're, we put everything aside to work on a safety issue or a school or a district crisis. I will let Carla continue with some highlights from our family engagement work.
So as we know, much of the family and community engagement work takes place in the schools. Schools continue to host their back-to-school events, their literacy and math nights, the parent universities, navigating the American education system workshops, and many other events that support our parent involvement. Last year, we worked with our assessment and elementary teams to integrate family engagement strategies with our school improvement plans. This is existing work, and we are very thrilled to support our schools as they implement these plans. In a district of 28,000 families, of course, we can't do it all alone. We rely on some very good and new long-term partners. The Citizens Advisory Council Family and Community Engagement Committee continues to do excellent work in identifying ways to increase family and community support in our district and schools. They've held multiple parent group networks, events to provide a venue for our PTO, our PTA, and our booster clubs to come together and share fundraising ideas, to network, and of course, to get more information about the district. We also continue to host our African-American Parent Leadership Institute and our Hispanic Parent Leadership Institute. The commitment of the participants has exceeded our expectations with a combined 107 graduates since 2010, and 20 participants moving on to the second year of the training this school year. Recruitment is currently underway for this year's cohorts. Graduates and current participants have committed to represent their communities and district and school groups such as the Citizens Advisory Council, the U-46 Instructional Council, and our Board of Education, as well as local government with our newly-elected City Elgin Council member. And they also sit on state-level councils. Council member, and they also sit on state-level councils. The work of the Parent Leadership Institute has been sought and presented at state-level conferences and national organizations such as the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. With us tonight is African-American Parent Leadership participant Farah Steven. She is currently part of the sixth cohort and will be going into her second year of the program in October. She is a Bartlett and a Kenyon Woods parent. Farah is going to share with us tonight some of her experience through the Parent Leadership Institute and how this has encouraged her current role in the Instructional Council. Farah?
Hello, my name is Farah Steven. Thank you for having me here tonight. As Carla said, I am the parent of two students in Bartlett High and one in Kenyon Woods. When I heard about the program, AAPI, last year, I was very excited to be a part of it because I knew it would give me, well, I thought it would give me an opportunity to learn more about the district and to be more involved in the schools that my children were in. And as it was, it was very educational for me, the things that I learned. I was able to meet a lot of administration. Some of you guys, I was able to meet at some of the meetings. I was also able to meet some of the other school principals and some of the teachers that are a part of the district as well. Another exciting part for me was to be able to meet some of the parents of the community and to just, throughout the programs on Saturday, we were trained on how to speak in front of crowds, on how to put programs together, and that was just very engaging and learning for the parents as a part of the program. Throughout the program, I also learned about the Instructional Council, and an opportunity came up, one of the members had to step down, and an opportunity came up for me to become a part. So I chose to become a part of the Instructional Council. I was very impressed. I didn't know that there was even an Instructional Council. I had no clue of how curriculum was picked for the schools. So I got to sit in and learn and see, get presentations presented of how the instructions that the district was going to choose from. So I was very impressed with how that was done, and I was happy that they did open the door to community people, and I was happy to be able to give my voice as an African-American parent, to be able to just, our school district is very diverse, so to be able to know that they want to get a widespread diversity of input on the curriculum was very encouraging to me. So I'm just excited for next year's program, and I look forward to it starting in October.
Thank you, Farah. Last year, we also wanted to, we launched a new communication campaign. We wanted to seize the opportunity that came with 2,600 full-time, full-day kindergartners. So we launched a year-long multimedia communication campaign that was aimed at increasing parental engagement among those families. The campaign featured a monthly bilingual newsletter, a dozen videos, fact sheets and emails that were sent home to families for the class of 2029. They were posted on our website, on social media, and sent home, like I said, via email. We also, as part of that campaign, set and surpassed a goal to persuade at least a third of our full-day kindergarten parents to sign our FDK Promise, which is a pledge that they would spend at least five hours at home, school, and/or at the district to support their child's education. Nearly 40% of all the full-day kindergarten parents signed the promise, and that's a tool that we will continue to use at the kindergarten level. Also, as part of that campaign, we piloted and promoted a program we call U-46 Engage. It offers a 90-minute overview of the district and the many parental involvement opportunities and benefits. More than 100 FDK parents attended those sessions, one of those eight bilingual sessions that we offered, and again, we will continue to offer that to our full-day kindergarten parents this year, but also to our first-grade parents, those class of 2029 students. Additionally, in U-46, we're lucky to have an educational foundation. The U-46 Educational Foundation continues to support various projects and events. One of the, one of those is the Annual Superintendent Scholarship, and last year, we were able, with lots of collaboration, to break previous records and were able to award 35 scholarships to first-time college-bound students. And as many of you know, this is not just a monetary prize, but it's really an opportunity to support these students as they make a new path for themselves and their families. And so we have a wonderful reception each year for the donors, and we'll be sure to invite you to that event. It's just a really heartwarming event, a great time to meet students and network with them, and we thank Board Member O'Neil Wallace for teaching them some of those networking skills. Carla's also going to talk to you about Principal For a Day.
So since 2009, we've held this annual Principal For a Day event, which welcomes our community leaders into our schools to help them get to know our schools and to better understand how they operate. Guest principals shadow a school leader for half a day and then come together for a lunch conversation on their morning experience and what makes a school work. This past school year, we moved the annual event from the fall, to the fall, to allow time in the year for participants to come back to their schools and continue their partnership with them. This past year, nearly 80 leaders from various sectors of the U-46 participated, and more than half of these principals, guest principals, were first-time participants. In addition, we were honored to have a Streamwood High alum, John Garcia, of Channel 7, return to his high school and have, and then share some reflection on his U-46 education as our luncheon keynote speaker. This year, Secretary of Education Beth Purvis has agreed to join us. Our event this year is going to be on Friday, December 1st, 2017, and we invite you to save the date, and hopefully, you're able to join us that morning. The district continues to provide opportunities for individuals and organizations to be involved in the school life and district decisions. The CAC committees, as well as the Bilingual Parent Advisory Council, African-American Advisory Council, our Clergy Advisory Council, just to name a few, continue to grow in membership. Our partnerships in community groups, in community group and organizations, they continue to build. Our CEO, Tony Sanders, board members, and several U-46 staff continue to represent the school district in our communities by serving on local chambers and other community groups as well.
We're also here to support the Board's goal in the strategic plan of engaging with the community outside of Board events, and we know that Board members attended 23 community events last year, and we are here to continue to support and promote that participation. We have, as I said, several events coming up in Principal For a Day as one, but one that's coming up sooner is the Annual Expo at ECC. That's a career and curriculum expo, and that will be on October 14th at ECC. It's a Saturday. We also host a volunteer reception every year that's to honor all the volunteers in our schools and at the district level, and each year, we name one group to, who's done, you know, who's gone above and beyond. And the past spring, we honored Kids Hope USA. That's an organization that puts 133 mentors into 17 of our schools across the district to give them one-on-one time and additional support. We also named, we added a new category last year to honor volunteers who make a difference in one school, and so that meant honoring three women who knitted more than, knitted caps for more than 500 students at Hillcrest Elementary last year. The School and Community Relations Department, as, you know, we're talking about how we're trying to make a difference in family engagement, and where, that the metric for that is the Five Essentials. So we really have worked over the last couple of years to increase participation in that survey among parents. The report requires at least a 20% participation in order to generate a report about each school. So we worked really hard to increase participation in that survey.
In 2015, 2016, School and Community Relations, our department worked very closely with the Assessment Office to encourage parent participation in the survey. We provided principals with a communication toolkit, which contained a timeline, sample messages, and ideas to promote the survey with their families. Parents received multiple email and text messages reminding them about the survey, and we also declared a Five Essentials Week, shared a video about the impact of the survey, and posted on social media. Our efforts worked. We went from just two schools a prior year, which was 2014-15, to 96% of our schools meeting that 20% parent participation threshold. This past school year, 2016-17, there was a slight decrease in the number of schools who met that threshold. We had 86% of our schools that have received a report of the results. We implemented all the same and probably more communication tactics, but believe that the decline may be due to the change in the timeframe of the survey delivery from spring to the fall. Based on this past school year's Five Essentials survey results, the parent assessment of involvement in schools did increase from 35 to 40%. The parents who responded favorably on the parent survey in terms of how welcome and respected they feel within the district also showed an increase of 5% this past school year. And tonight here, we have Principal Laura Alegria and parent Phil Novello from the Streamwood Elementary School, which they will tell us a little bit about how they used those Five Essentials survey results to develop their Eagle Eyes program. Laura?
Thank you, Carla. So as part of the response to the great efforts of our district in promoting the Five Essentials, we at Oak Hill, we reviewed the data on a monthly basis. So that's our common practice at Oak Hill. We share our data with parents and families, and in our data and our monthly share, we included the Five Essential responses and data. Last year, as part of our Five Essentials, it revealed some concerns. So through a couple of coffee, coffee with the principal, meetings with parents and PTO, and several other meetings, we discovered that it was, the concern that came was more in relationship to morning and afternoon supervision. So the perception of our families was that there wasn't enough adult supervision in the morning and afternoons. So we created "That's in Action," or "Oak Hill Eagles, That's in Action," and that was in collaboration with our leadership team, which in order to meet the need that our parents perceived. We had six members that joined in right on board, and we created schedules. So the members will volunteer morning and afternoon, either way that worked for them, and with the opportunity for them to go, after they have helped with the supervision, they will go into the classroom with their child and experience the class with their child for a couple of hours. That was in response to our Five Essentials, and we heard, we have heard from parents that they really like this club and this opportunity for volunteering, and we have one of our Eagle Dads here to share his experience.
Thank you, Laura. My name is Phil Novello. This was a really great volunteer opportunity for me. I was strongly urged by my wife to volunteer for this, and this was definitely one of the best things she's pushed me into. It's just, it's very nice to be out there with the parents, to see the kids and the parents' faces when they know you're out there. We're out there, we're wearing very bright yellow t-shirts, they know we're out there for safety, and it seems like they've really taken to this initiative that Oak Hill has started. The big bonus is being able to go into the classroom with your child. Just seeing their faces light up when you get into the classroom with them. I was able to read a book in my daughter's class. I was able to interact with my son's class. It's just a great opportunity to be a part of your child's education while helping with the safety at the school. Like I said, our main purpose is welcoming parents and students in the morning and sending them home safely in the afternoon. So it's a great program, and I hope it keeps building support and getting more volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil, and thank you, Principal Alegria. We are also going to just give you a few highlights from our communication efforts for the past year. Our department's responsibilities include issuing press releases about various district programs, events, and news, and we issued about 100 of those press releases last year, and they generated nearly 200 media stories. We have increased our likes on the U-46 Facebook page. We have about 12,500, more than 12,500 today from a couple of years ago when we were around 7,000. We produce and publish about 105 videos a year. That was last year, and that works out to be about three per week, and that includes the live stream of these Board meetings. Our videos, we have a list of the top 10 here, but they really try to highlight district-wide programs, but a few gems within our schools, a few great stories. So we highlighted our dual-language program in a video last year, but we also went in and highlighted those lovely knitters that knitted all the caps at Hillcrest Elementary. So we try to do a mix. We also send out lots of messages. Our schools and our districts use a mass notification system that sends out, that sent out about 11,000, a little bit over 11,500 messages last year. We're also, we also launched a mobile app in 2016, and that has about 12,000 app downloads. If you haven't downloaded it, I recommend that you do. It's free, and it really gives you quick access in your hand to district contacts and school contacts, the lunch menu, the very popular lunch menu, the school and district calendar, and lots of other news. Last year, we also launched a parent newsletter. It was a weekly bilingual parent newsletter, and we will continue to send that out this year. And for our efforts in communications, we were honored from the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association last year with seven awards, and we recently learned that we've earned another five for work that we did in 2016-17. But we always want to improve, and there's lots of work to be done, and we're going to talk a little bit about what we're working on now.
We will continue encouraging participation in the Five Essentials survey, you know, among our parents, our students, and our staff, and we will work with our schools to provide that additional support around their family engagement efforts, sharing best practices, and providing a toolkit with research-based resources.
We'll continue to roll out the U-46 Engage program. We will also continue to provide the pledge or the promise to our full-day kindergarten classes this year, and continue to support our full-day kindergarten parents with lots of communication, and again, continue to support that class of 2029, now first graders, with more information and the U-46 Engage sessions. Finally, we are in the middle of overhauling our website, our school and district website. As you can see, it's going to look, I think it will have a much sleeker look, it'll be easier to navigate. It's a very intuitive website platform, and we hope to introduce that to all schools and the district by the end of this calendar year, certainly before Santa Claus comes to town. So that, that should be a nice facelift for our website, and we're certainly open to any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I love the idea about "Dads in Action." That is fabulous. Are there any plans to expand that to other schools?
We have not talked about that, but we certainly could. That's a great idea. Yeah, I love the program, too.
And I had another question about the Hispanic-American, or the Hispanic Parent Leadership Institute, the African-American Parent Leadership Institute. Do we have any plans maybe of combining that into the Parent Leadership Institute and sort of targeting all families in U-46?
We haven't talked about that, but certainly could, yeah. We've, we certainly could. We've seen, you know, the success of the U-46 Engage, so it's something we could look at again.
Any other questions? Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I think by the end of the presentation, you had another 200 likes, I think, on Facebook, but double-checked me.
Next item on our agenda is comments from the audience.
Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We are not the public comment period of the meeting when the board listens to issues and concerns but does not respond to statements. As stated in our board welcome flyer, we ask that you complete a request to speak card. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes. A tone will sound when your time is up. If you wish to have a reply to your concern or question, please check the box in the card, and a written reply will be mailed to you. Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos a la reunión de la Junta Educativa de U46. Nos encontramos durante la porción de la reunión donde la junta le da la bienvenida a un comentario del público. Durante este tiempo, la junta escuchará su comentario pero no contestará su pregunta o probará comentario. Como indicado en el folio de bienvenida, le pedimos que completes la tarjeta, y cada persona tendrá tres minutos para dirigirse ante la junta. Si escuchan el señal, deberá concluir su comentario lo más pronto posible, y si desea una respuesta a su pregunta, por favor, la caja que se encuentra en la tarjeta. Gracias.
Okay, our first speaker is, can't read the first name, Jo Magnani? Jo? Jane?
It's Jane.
Jane? Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jane Magnani. I am a junior at Bartlett High School. Last year, last year, I helped rewrite our school dress code. I organized a small but effective protest that ultimately caught the attention of our new principal, Mr. Demowski. He worked with me and others to create a new and improved dress code that addressed student needs and created a positive environment while letting students look and feel great. I spent a lot of time dedicated to this cause, writing, researching, interviewing, and speaking. And in the end, it was a huge success. BHS has now implemented the new dress code and is seeing great results so far. A copy of this dress code will be handed out to you after this. I'm here today to talk about the importance of this dress code. While it was not, while it was implemented at BHS, I do not think this is sufficient due to the large number of students who are facing body shaming, disrespect, and unfairness due to the way they choose to dress. I know that students, parents, and teachers from several other schools have responded to me saying they want it at their schools, well. I believe that the school board's existing dress code policy, consisting of the items listed on the back of the handle you will receive, is a good starting point and should not be changed. However, some schools have overly restrictive dress code interpretations, some schools have no written interpretations, and some schools implement these interpretations unfairly. Therefore, I would like to suggest that each middle and high school form a team composed of students, staff, and teachers, and develop a simple and fair dress code interpretation for their unique environment. Let me tell you why this change is necessary. Right now, in our schools, we are experiencing unequal and unfair implementation of this code. We are experiencing body shaming. We are experiencing disrespect. Research has proven that school dress codes are primarily geared towards females, and that females are 2/3 more likely to be dress coded than males. Males are also failed in this dress code system by implying that their eyes and their minds are incapable of focusing on their schoolwork rather than a classmate's clothing. Research has also shown that during these high school and middle school years, it is crucial to provide a stable, healthy environment in school where kids have self-expression but also boundaries on what is and isn't acceptable. If students aren't provided with this kind of supportive environment, they are more likely to look down upon themselves and others, and often those negative views can have even more negative actions. We need a dress code that allows expression of self while still setting boundaries for what is and isn't acceptable. BHS has tackled this issue head-on. Please, members of the board, if you believe in your students like I know you do, if you want them to succeed, please encourage the middle and high schools to rewrite their individual codes with student support. And as the quote on the wall leading to this boardroom says, "Human diversity makes tolerance more than a virtue. It makes it a requirement for survival." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela McManaman.
Hello, my name is Angela McManaman, and I'm here to talk about the dress code as well. I believe that my school's dress code is unfair. The dress code limits students from fully expressing themselves through their clothing and accessories. Almost every student I know feels unflattered or ugly, wearing shorts past their middle fingertips. It also represses the students who are taller, have longer legs, fingers, or arms because it makes the shorts appear shorter. I would also like to mention the fact that the phrase "boys will be boys" is often used as an excuse for why girls can't wear clothing like tank tops or shorts above their middle fingers. Well, I think that we should start teaching boys to stop sexualizing girls' bodies. I mean, what is so sexual about girls' shoulders? Many of my female friends are very angry about the fact that shoulders cannot be uncovered. I and many others believe the new dress code we are trying to get enforced is much better and fair. Some of the most absurd rules included in my middle school's dress code are leggings, yoga pants, tank tops, and the finger-length rule. These rules are unnecessary. They create stress and provide an unneeded source of humiliation and embarrassment. This teaches children they can't make their own decisions. Overall, students should be able to feel comfortable and safe. Just as we teach students not to censor ideas, why would you censor clothing?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Larson.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the dress code, too, but I don't know if I can be as eloquent as these two young ladies were. Of the lessons my child and all the students in this district are learning, there's one I fear they are internalizing all too clearly. The Student Code of Conduct calls out disruptive clothing or appearance as an infraction. This is dangerously vague and provides no standards or guidelines for teachers and administrators to apply a fair and consistent policy to all students in the district without bias. Enforcement of student dress codes disproportionately impacts girls. When the size of your strap is more noteworthy than the framework of your argument, and the revelation that you have shoulders is more groundbreaking than a successful thought experiment, education is failing. Instead of teaching students that girls' bodies themselves are distracting, we should be teaching students bodily autonomy. By telling boys they're not responsible for managing their own thoughts and actions, you are enabling rape culture and teaching generations of boys that they don't need to take responsibility for themselves and that they can't be expected to. This is unfair to girls and demeaning to boys. Allowing yourself to be disrupted and distracted means that you're viewing a girl as an object instead of a person. Sexist dress codes that disproportionately impact girls, students of color, and LGBT students is the true disruption. Students will either rise or sink to our expectations. These types of dress codes teach girls that their bodies are shameful and wrong. We need to unequivocally send the message that girls and boys in this district are distinct individuals worthy of respect and not objects up for study or discussion. We need to explicitly state that natural hair, braids, or other common expressions of ethnicity are not disruptive. We need to provide clear guidelines to staff that individual implicit or explicit biases will not be tolerated in rule enforcement. No one is petitioning the district to trapeze naked down the hallways or wear a swimsuit in chemistry lab. Students should be allowed to dress in a manner that's comfortable, appropriate for the subjects they're studying, and allows them the opportunity to feel confident and in control of their own bodies. I'd like to leave you with a sobering statistic. One in four women will be sexually assaulted while in college. College doesn't trigger a magic switch where 25% of our daughters leave high school full of dreams of the future and return-home survivors. The thoughts and behaviors that enable such stark reality are taught and reinforced here in the rules, policies, hallways, and classrooms of U46. I urge the board to reexamine the dress codes and create a district-wide policy that treats all students as independent individuals worthy of respect and bodily autonomy, and explicitly protects girls and students of color from biased punishments or enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Piper McManaman.
Thanks. I'm going to stand. Good evening, I'm Piper McManaman, one of the organizers of the Free the Tank Top.
Can you pause for one second, please? Because otherwise, they can't hear you on YouTube, so, yep, they can use the microphone.
We need the microphone.
Thank you.
Hey, that's the microphone. Good evening, I'm Piper McManaman, one of the organizers of the Free the Tank Top Dress Code Boycott on September 16, 2016. I and a friend of mine were inspired by the suggestion of a student who complained about being dress coded for wearing a tank top. Though I personally haven't been dress coded because I wear a gravity and gym shorts pretty much constantly, I've seen its effect on others. Unfair dress codes are an issue that students around the world experience in high school and middle school. Restrictive rules ban things such as shorts, tank tops, yoga pants, and more. However, in U46, a lot of places don't have really like a set dress code. Rather, it's up to teachers and staff to judge what's appropriate and what's not. This may seem like a step in the right direction, but it allows sexism, fatphobia, transphobia, and other prejudices to affect which students get to go about their day normally and which are punished for their bodies. Many staff members, especially men and older women, can be, not for lack of a better term, but for lack of a politer one, old-fashioned. The dress code Jane proposes finds middle ground between those who believe dress codes should be abolished and those who believe that a strict dress code is necessary to control the children. The code is easy to adhere to while still allowing personal freedom and not sexualizing the bodies of children. However, some may argue that the dress code is bad because of its leniency. There are several reasons that some people might give against this dress code, and I will provide a simple explanation for each. One, a dress code in school prepares students for the workplace. Many students already are employed, at least on the high school level. Are we going to be required to wear McDonald's uniforms to school next because that's what we're expected to wear to work? Two, the exposed bodies of young girls can be a distraction to boys in class and male teachers. If teachers are too distracted by the bodies of young underage girls to teach, and that's not the young girls' fault, maybe the teacher should be more secure in sexualizing minors being too busy staring at a child's body to teach a class. And if a student has an issue with being distracted in class, they're welcome to complain about it and tell somebody about it. Chances are, not many will because nobody's going to be distracted by a shoulder. And three, finally, the students should be doing their homework, not protesting unfairness and discrimination. Just because adults are unable to multitask between sexualizing teenagers and educating them doesn't mean we're unable to multitask between fighting injustice and filling out noneducational standardized stress-coding sheets of paper, but that's a problem for another time. Basically, the current state of dress codes is laughable, and I support students taking a standing opposition to it. I also believe that Jane Magnani's proposed dress code is the answer. But I would like to share the words of a former BHS student who was personally victimized by the dress code. He said, "The dress code affected me when I was publicly pulled aside in the middle of lunch by a dean to take off what she figured was inappropriate for school, though I was still following the dress code, and the tank top I wore was not revealing at all. I was embarrassed and frustrated for the rest of the day. Her interruption about my clothes caused more distraction in my day than the shirt I wore would have." A student who witnessed this event stood up for the dress-coded student and was immediately shut down and disrespected by the administrator. Situations like these are why I believe we need change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. In response to the public comments tonight, I'm certainly aware of the Elgin High School discussion on Friday and over the weekend. I assure you, I'm going to bring it actually forward to my student advisory council. I think that'd be a good place to at least start having the conversation and figure out a way to roll it out district-wide. And Jane, I'll be reaching out to you to get a copy of your dress code if you haven't. Great. I'll follow up.
Do you have several copies?
Sure.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is other business, board member and CEO update. Does anyone have anything to share? Jeanette?
Yeah, I wanted to just make a few comments about the dress code. I also share your frustration as a mom of some middle schoolers. Well, one middle schooler, in fact, a new middle schooler this year, and my younger one is in elementary school. And we were shopping, and what are we going to buy? Because the shorts have to be down to the fingertips, and we can't wear tank tops. And so we're thinking, well, cap sleeves. I mean, I think we need to look at this because if we're going to send kids to school in summertime, August is summertime, they ought to be able to wear tank tops. So I think it is something that needs to be addressed, and I've felt your frustration shopping with my daughters.
Casey?
So I have two things. First of all, I was able to go out and see the eclipse today, and that was more awesome than I expected it would be. It was so cool. We had the special glasses and everything, and we were able to see like the moon going right over the sun. That was awesome. That said, it was very hot today. So the new BHS dress code was awesome because I didn't have to wear jeans or long shorts. I was able to wear my regular shorts, which was nice, so I wasn't sweating the entire time. So yes, the new dress code is very freeing, and to my knowledge, has not caused any distractions to any other students.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a short update. Actually, I received it today, and I shared it with Dr. King. The Illinois Department of Revenue had just come out with a personal property replacement tax estimate for 2018. The takeaway here is that the district will lose about $1 million. And I think more ominous is the fact that the state continues to lose business. I'm not going to translate that. It just is a sign of the times that I think we all need to take note of.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say to the Huff Community, Huff Elementary School, they did lose a staff member yesterday, and our thoughts and prayers are with that community. I know we'll be doing a moment of silence at the next board meeting for the employee who is no longer with us, but my heart's out to that school community.
Anything else? All right. Next item on the agenda is FOIA requests.
Before the Board are two Freedom of Information Act requests that were responded to since the last board meeting. Those are now available publicly on the board's website, as well as will be uploaded on the district website tomorrow.
Any questions? All right, consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the special board meeting, June 13, 2017, minutes of the board meeting, June 19, 2017, district Title I plan, school resource officer contracts for all secondary schools with Bartlett, Elgin, South Elgin, and Streamwood Police Departments, a proposal for curriculum and instruction for REED 180 coaching, a contract renewal for curriculum instruction with REED 180 New Generation licenses, a contract renewal for educational support programs in alignment for Abbott, and finally, a contract renewal for business services, financial operations for Microsoft Dynamics GP 2016.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like Okay, hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of August 21, 2017?
So moved.
Melissa?
Seconded.
Phil? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved, succeed.
Okay, discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for August 21, 2017. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of And if the board has questions, Mr. Burdich can respond.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the itemized bills of August 21, 2017, in the amount of $5,225,917.22?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Melissa? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved, succeed.
Our next is board policy update, Section 7 slash Students portion. This was on the last work session of the Board of Education and is coming back tonight for final adoption.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve Board Policy Update, Section 7, Students?
So moved.
Melissa?
Second.
Tracy? Any discussion?
Quick comment. I'm going to be voting yes with the understanding that we are going to revisit the first-day exclusion policy next year to further, hopefully, match what the state allows, which is October 15.
Monica?
And I wanted to just point out that I see that that section's not here, which is good, that part we're not updating now. I'm also hoping that we could look at that section before the end of the year, before the normal time, because we need time to, you know, if we were going to make any kind of a change, that would change a lot of the work that's done before school year. So I'm hoping in October or something like that, we'd be able to look at those sections once we have all the results of this year.
And I think McGill and I have in our notes, or Ms. Rodriguez and I have in our notes that by October, we restart that process again.
Cool. Thanks.
Anything else?
Glad to hear that. Good suggestion.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Last year at this time, when the board adopted the policy, they also adopted the student code of conduct. In prior years, up until last year, the administration would provide the board a copy of the student code of conduct that was attached to the board docs, but it was never officially approved by the board until last year for the first time. This is going to be an annual event. Before you is the student code of conduct. There are some updates to the student code of conduct, but nothing that is substantial in terms of how it affect our day to day processes. Here to present, if you don't mind them giving a quick overview, is Luis Rodriguez and John Heiderschain.
Hi, good evening, and thank you. Just a quick overview, what we're attempting to do with our student code of conduct is two years ago, we pulled it from the handbook, so it was own separate book, so we could really hone on on the transparency, consistency, and clarity of our discipline procedures and policies, and then share that on the web, so all of our parents and students could access that anytime and hold us accountable to our own rules and with consistency. So in this guide, what we actually did, and we responded to parent comments, student comments, staff comments, is we added things like a preface, kind of talking about this document as a book. We added a section on how to report a concern based on parent comments that your discipline policy is fine, but what if I do have a problem? Who do I call if I don't want to call my principal or something on that nature? So we added that, our coordinator of student discipline. We added the disclaimer section. We really didn't add this section. This section was just pulled from the handbook. So essentially, we were pulling things from the handbook to the student code of conduct and making those separate documents even further, and then adding board policy into the student code of conduct that would lend clarity to your policy and make that more of a public accessible document in context with our discipline procedures. So that was really the lion's share of the effort here. It does not substantially change anything that we've been doing or are doing with our discipline procedures. The one change is we've added a system of minors and majors, and the driving force there was minors and majors. The driving force was our MTSS collaboration that was formed last year with our ETA led by Tricia Schroed, and I'm also in Randy Ellison's on that committee, because really driving at minors are and can be managed by teachers and really drive clarity at that. And majors are things that should be managed by administrators. And sometimes occasionally, there'll be some in between areas, some gray areas, where we're articulating that in our code of conduct, so we have more of a clear established guideline on what we're doing and how we're doing it. We did add the section, the appeal process from the handbook, brought that into the discipline procedures. We also believe articulating the things about searches is more transparent on what we're doing, random searches on how we're managing those situations and if there's reasonable suspicion. And in the conclusion, we've added the things there in the glossary and our Title Nine section into the code of conduct. And in the state law on isolated timeout restraints, it does require that the board inform the public, our parents, our families, I'm sorry, of our board policy about isolated timeout restraints and the reporting requirements to parents. So we felt it was important to put it in this document, so when we publish it, it is done in their hands within the 15 day requirement of the school year.
Can I have a motion? Sorry, could I have a motion to approve the student code of conduct?
So moved.
Tracy?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, so this is the first time that the board is seeing this document. Now, normally, we get to look at it for a cycle before we vote on it. And I posed this question to Mr. Sanders, and he said that there weren't substantive changes. But I think that 24 pages out of the 34 page document have changes in them, and to me, that's substantive. I'd like more time to look at this and would like to move that this be removed from tonight and voted on next time.
I would second that motion.
There is a motion already, I think. But I mean, if, one thing we could do is proceed with the motion to see if it fails or if it, yeah, and then if it fails, then we can, you can entertain the second motion that board member Ward recommended.
Okay. Is that we're still in the discussion, though, of the first motion? Is there some urgency for why this needs to be approved today?
It's the beginning of the school year. Quite, we got late and long. We had some pretty trying times at the end of the school year last year in our ability to get in front of parents. The CAC parents, most importantly, through that process, got into late June, and by the time we did our review process, we are here now. So it's the urgency, in my opinion, was it is beginning of the school year, although unplanned, that's the way it happened this year. So definitely not my plan to have it happen next year like that, but I also can't account for all the things that are possible in our school lives.
But you did mention that most of the information came already from existing policies. So if we didn't vote on it for two weeks, would there really be confusion?
Can I address that? So what Mr. Heiderschain was addressing is that there is that urgency of putting and giving those, the handbooks to the students and educating them on the handbook and doing the same thing with the parents. So it's always a requirement that, you know, not just to publish a student code of conduct, but actually to disseminate it to the students and make sure the students understand and understand it well, as well as the parents. Isn't that correct? Is that what you were addressing?
Yes, and most of your high schools and middle schools are in that process right now, and we certainly don't want to put a code of conduct out there that's not been approved. So it's, we're in a tight spot.
Have we, I thought Mr. Sanders said that we have not approved this in the past, though.
Last year was the first year when section seven came forward that you also approved the student code of conduct. Before that, it was a memo provided to the board, which is, here's the updates. It was never approved.
And last year, there were very many substantive changes that the law required.
It was a very, very different process, as many of you will recall. There were implementations from Public Act 456, and those would have been the substantive changes. And while your point's extremely, extremely valid, Board Member Ward, the edits proposed to this document, they're pages of edits. The substantive results to students and staff doesn't really change. So I think that kind of addresses your point, Ms. Board Member Nolan.
Okay, if we're going to vote on the motion that was made, then I have a number of questions and comments I'd like to make. So I had asked the question, can SROs interview students without parents present? And the answer I received was that SROs stand in loco parentis with the students at the schools they are assigned. And loco parentis refers to the legal responsibility of assuming parental status during the school day on behalf of the students assigned to them. SROs, which is Student Resource Officers, they're the police that are in the schools, just for the public's benefit, like other administrators, can interview students without the parents being present while performing their duties. So I had a comment or a response to that. I don't agree that police should be able to interview students without parents present, or at least an attempt to contact the parents. I have instructed my children that I am to be there if they are interviewed by the police or even the principal, and I encourage other parents to do the same.
Could we add some clarity? So I think the question, can SROs interview students without parent presence? I think the answer that you just read out, that addresses part of the issue, because if SRO is acting in their capacity as a law enforcement officer, we have a board policy, well, the board has created promulgated policy 7.199, which refers to what you just discussed. And that would typically be in a law enforcement capacity. However, there are discussions that SROs have on their day to day. They're walking through the hallway, excuse me, young man, what are you doing, to dispel whatever may be going on. In that context, they're not necessarily acting in the law enforcement capacity, would be as an SRO in their day to day duties. Furthermore, SROs, and Mr. Heiderschain can elaborate, they'd also, they don't implement the disciplinary piece in the building. That's typically school staff. However, if they're a witness in, for example, an expulsion hearing, then they'd be called in to testify as to what they may have seen.
Okay.
So we just wanted to distinguish that as well. Those are, it really does depend, depending on the facts.
So to clarify, then, if an SRO is interviewing a student on a law enforcement matter, then parents are called?
Yes, 7.199, when law enforcement officials find it necessary to question students during the school day or periods of extracurricular activities, the principal designated will be present, so we'll have an administrator present during that questioning. The officer's responsibility is to notify us that they're doing a law enforcement investigation on the student, then the school administrator serving in loco parenti at that time. And then the board policy further goes on that we make every effort to notify the parent immediately upon that investigation.
Okay. Well, I'm glad for that clarification. That's helpful. So I have a list of questions and comments. I don't know if you want me to continue, or if anyone else has something to add on that particular topic.
Does anyone have any questions on that part?
Okay, so my next question was, please confirm that students subjected to de facto coed restrooms and locker rooms because a gender dysphoric student demanded access to the locker rooms and bathrooms of the opposite biological sex, who requests a private locker room or restroom would not be deemed as bullying a person based on gender orientation? And the answer I received was confirmed. Pursuant to board policy, all students have equal rights regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation. Board policy, equal educational opportunities. The board's policy is reflected in the school district U46 guidelines to support transgender students. Under the guidelines, and I'm still quoting from administration, "Any student who has a need or desire for increased privacy, regardless of the underlying reason, should be provided with reasonable alternative arrangements. Reasonable alternative arrangements may include the use of a private area or a separate changing schedule or use of a single stall restroom." So now my response. Minnesota just released a toolkit for ensuring safe and supportive schools for transgender and gender nonconforming students, which states, "Schools should work with transgender and gender nonconforming students to ensure that they are able to access needed facilities in a manner that is safe, consistent with their gender identity, and does not stigmatize them. Privacy objections raised by a student in interacting with a transgender or gender nonconforming student may be addressed by segregating the student and raising the objection, provided that the action of the school official does not result in stigmatizing the transgender and gender nonconforming student." My question then is, what if a gender dysphoric student feels stigmatized by another student's request to use a separate restroom? Now granted, we're not under that Minnesota policy, but policies like that are becoming law across the nation. So to reiterate, what if a gender dysphoric student feels uncomfortable that another student wants separate changing facilities? What then?
So this is not fall under the student code of conduct. It falls under the guidelines to support transgender students. And I think, I think Board Member Ward, you just clearly quoted from the guidelines that we support every student, and it all depends on the circumstances. And so far, we've been very successful in addressing those issues. I don't know, CEO Sanders, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered it. I think it is covered within the guidelines we established.
Well, more to the point, then, why not just prohibit bullying, period? Instead of naming certain classes of people who shall not be subject to bullying, this document names several of those. Why not just prohibit bullying, per se?
If bullying is prohibited by the district, that is actually defined in our code of conduct. However, if an action is actually bullying, is a fact specific analysis. So in the question that you asked, the original one that pertained to bullying, John, school staff, all of us, depending on the level of severity, would scrutinize that and see if the action that occurred actually fell within the definition of bullying, which is in the existing code of conduct. So it depends on what occurred.
Yeah, so my point is, I don't think it's necessary to call out bullying for this and bullying for that in all the categories we put in this document. I think bullying, per se, ought to be prohibited.
Bullying is prohibited, and the codes that you see are required by state and federal guidelines. So those are not by our, we have to have those codes.
Board policy is explicit of the bullying. We have a bullying policy that's very explicit.
And a definition.
I think what John's saying is, like, I play page 12 of the student code of conduct, bullying based on disability, bullying based on gender, bullying based on race, color, national origin, those align to state and federal codes, and we have to enter the data for any occurrences under those sections, correct?
Yes.
I have a number of other issues, which I'm not going to go fully into detail, but my biggest issue is the random searches. So I had asked and made the comment that I believe random searches section is incompatible with the reasonable suspicion language of the searches section. I do not agree that students can be subject to random searches when no reasonable suspicion is present. Random searches do not, quote, "respect all students' individual rights to privacy," in my opinion. Random searches do not provide protection of constitutional rights, in my opinion. When random searches occur, can the board be updated about when it occurred and what was found? And this was the response of administration. Random searches are authorized by law and board policy, provided such searches are truly random and do not target any specific individual, which requires reasonable suspicion that the student has committed an offense. Random searches are conducted from time to time in our schools. Administration will follow the direction of the board as to whether all searches, along with the results, will be shared with the board. My follow up comment is that I don't agree with random searches, period. Regardless of case law and current policy, I personally believe our founders did not intend us to give up the privacy of our children or ourselves in exchange for security. I have a philosophical objection to random searches. Attending public school not to mean that Fourth Amendment rights are weakened or forfeit. And for that reason alone, I'm going to be voting no on this policy. I would like to propose to the board that the board be informed of when random searches take place and the results of those searches.
Okay.
Just a minor comment. I'll be voting against this, too. And it's for the, first of all, I applaud the fact that you're coming to us with this and that we've had the chance, but I don't believe it's been a reasonable discourse. And I think that's what's lacking here, and I appreciate that the district does have to go and get this done quickly. So it's kind of that approach. I believe we just need more time to look at this.
Casey?
Just a question. I don't know if you can do this, since, you know, it'll change, but if you are able or willing to get more time to look over this, which I would understand. We are putting in all of our, like, MTSS stuff right now, especially in high schools and middle schools. So would we be able to put the, I guess, the current version of the code of conduct, like, online and have our teachers say, yeah, everyone, like, take 10, 15 minutes to kind of look over this, so you know what's going on? And then when the official code of conduct gets approved, then we get the handout?
Yeah, so the code of conduct is still in place from last year.
Yeah. So would we be able to look at that one, and then, once a new one gets approved, we get it later?
Yeah, you could look at both of them. You can look at the one right now. It's in the parent student section of the website. And we have what's called an administrator's guide to the student code of conduct that we passed out last year to administrators to, again, drive a consistency, clarity, and transparency. This year, we're going to have the staff guidelines to the student code of conduct, which drives information and get it in hands of teachers and any staff that are interested. The idea is full transparency. Not the idea, the purpose is full transparency. It's not an idea.
If I may just respond to, to Mr. Costello, I know we do have, to the point that this did not receive appropriate amount of scrutiny so far, can you please walk through the steps we followed to develop this? And then also to remind the board that this is not significant changes to the policy. The policy also provided for searches. There's not any significant changes to how we actually handle student discipline. It's just updates to it that brings over some more stuff from the handbook.
Sure, so there's a core of elementary principals that Dr. Shaw and Mr. Berger have me work with about vetting any changes, so that was vetted through that committee. Then the deans in middle school. Then the deans in middle school, assistant principals who deal with discipline were involved in that review of the document and any suggestions and any changes that were recommended in our process and our procedures. The CAC was given the document as a word last year in the same format and process. Comments came in from parents digitally. We're able to respond to that in conversations with parents. Students were given the opportunity to review it with discussion from Mr. Ellison at different venues and in different places, and asked to take a look at our student code of conduct. So there, there, there are multiple areas, multiple views of where we have this vetted and looked at by, by stakeholders. I'm, I'm, my intent was to make that even broader this year. And, and quite frankly, just did not have the time to make it broader than that. But that's certainly broader than we have ever before.
Are there any other questions, comments, Veronica?
Um, I just, I want to say that I appreciate the thorough explanation and efforts to date and the effort to get all that input. And sometimes that effort for getting that input will sometimes create more hurdles. And that's not my intention here. So given the fact that there really isn't substantive, substantial, can't say that word, changes here, you know, the, it, I'm, I'm inclined to vote for this and that this, I'm assuming is going to be a work in progress every year, right? I mean, this is something that we can look at again in a couple of months if we wanted to, if we asked for that. But I, I don't want to hold things up and I appreciate all your efforts and I'm going to vote yes.
And I assure you, like Mr. Hirsch, that we will have it back earlier next year.
Yes, um, may I, Mr. Sanders, I almost called you Dr. Sanders, I don't know why that happened, it's been, it's been a long day. The, the, the intention was last year, and we, we didn't do this last year, but as a connected to all families and all parents is to send this as a, connect it as an attachment and a link to where it is once we post it on the website. I'd like to get that done this year in a meaningful way that looks like parents say, hey, we have our stuff together. Here, it's only a week in the school year and it's been published, that's the urgency. And we really want to make that, I really want to make that happen this year. And then I'm, I'm boldly going to go into the area of asking our principals to be able to send this to all students in our high schools and middle schools. And, and just send them the link and have them look at it and then accept the comments, which, but that's where I'd like to go, that's where I'm intending on going this year. And that's the ask for doing this faster. But later.
Any other questions, comments? Go call, please.
Mrs. Ward?
No.
Mr. Costello?
No.
Ms. O'Neill-Ellis? Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approve for two.
And I withdraw my previous motion because there's no point in voting on that now.
That was my next question. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is other business CAC.
But just one comment, I did ask the board for their opinion about whether we could be informed about random searches.
Oh.
So it would be nice to have a response from people.
Okay. Um, let's let Lisa, and then we'll go back to it, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. I could wait. No, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Hop, and this year for the 2017-2018 school year, I am serving as the Chair of CAC, the Citizens Advisory Council. For anyone who might be unaware or unfamiliar with our organization, we are a district-wide group of parents and members of the community who represent our schools. And we work very hard to learn more about district operations and come up with ideas and recommendations to the board. We serve as an advisory council to the board. We've been busy this summer planning and I was also very excited to welcome some new faces to our leadership team, to our executive committee. This year, we have Kate Thomas, who's joining longtime member Sarah Thompson and Rebecca Miller to chair the Specialized Student Services Committee. Andrew Giza is also joining a longtime CAC member, Mary Von Slick, to head the Curriculum Committee. And then you met this gentleman this evening. He was one of the Eagle Dads from Oak Hill. Phil Novello has stepped up to work with Matt Hovey to chair our Family and Community Engagement Committee. Larry Burry is serving as Vice Chair. And I have to give a special shout out to our Secretary Dana Wybe. She has kindly accepted the position again this year. And I, I can't do it without her. She is learning the website and getting up all our dates and meetings up there and helping me keep on top of not only my deadlines, but everybody's deadlines. So yay Dana, my new best friend. Looking ahead, we have all kinds of events planned for the coming year. The committees are, are putting on several special events. And I could honestly sit here for like 20 or 30 minutes, but then I have nothing for next time. So just looking to the immediate future, our first general CAC membership meeting will be held on September 7th at Elgin High School. We usually have an informational presentation and that night it will be the State of State Educational Funding, whatever that happens to be that day. We also will have our welcome and orientation for new members. Next month, on October 12th, our general presentation will be about grading and report cards and standard, standards-based learning. We thought that this would be very informative in time for parent-teacher conferences that usually start around the end of the month for the elementary school kids. I encourage everyone to come out, all our meetings are public. And if anyone's interested in representing their school, every school in the district can have five representatives plus two at-large members. Please contact your principal. If you're not even sure, if you want to commit just yet, come out to the meeting and see what it's all about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we move on to work session, I guess to Jeanette's question, don't we get updates when we get the security? Is John?
Um, he's had to step out.
Yeah.
Um, but during the annual report, not on, not so much the random searches. You, I'd have to go back and look at the past PowerPoints.
I was just a question, I couldn't remember. Those were included. I guess what does the board think?
Can you, what was your question? Are you asking us individually something or from?
Yeah, I'm asking if, if we can agree as a board to be informed of when random searches take place and the results of them.
Are you asking about each turn?
Yes.
I don't, do these go on all the time, like every day?
Regularly, weekly. I'll defer to, but try to, how often do, can you come back up for a second?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, we're back on random searches.
Sorry, oh, how, how often do schools conduct random searches? Are they still doing them on a weekly basis?
So, so what, no, what the, what the procedure calls for is, now this is high schools, and then I'll talk middle schools if that's okay, if that's okay to be very clear on what we're doing in both places. The rant, it's called the random, it's Weapons Prevention Program is what it's called. It's Weapons Prevention Program. And what we're doing in high schools, this is only high schools for the Weapons Prevention Program, is they're randomly selecting six classrooms. And we use the Excel randomizer, that's actually an add-on. We purchased a license for the Excel program called randomizer. The administrator enters every classroom in every hour. So every classroom in every hour, and then the randomizer selects that, you know, that combination, so that room at that hour. And then the administrator must go to and find out if there's actually a classroom during that time. And then use, they can use up to six. Now it says a maximum of six per month, unless there's something happening, like there's frequent weapons coming to school. And then we would ramp that up by procedure and, and actually do more to prevent weapons from coming to school. So it's, it's, again, the randomizer, there's no human intervention except for adding the room numbers and the hours of the day into the randomizer. They hit a button, they keep that, they keep that program printout, they file them to file. And then the administrators go to the classroom, they announce to students why they're doing what they're doing, what's the purpose of the random weapons checks, and that's to prevent weapons from coming to school. That's the purpose of it. The first year we instituted this, we saw 48% drop of weapons coming to our secondary schools. That was from 68 down to 40, I'm sorry, 35. And it sustained around there, last night, last year was 29. So 29 weapons came to school, whether that or, whether that was a, a pocket knife, a knife of some sort, or a BB gun or something like that. I can be more articulate on those, on that data for you. So that's the, that's the procedure there. One administrator would then take students out into the hallway and each one use a handheld metal detector that they're trained on and wand it around the physical presence of the person without any touching going on. If there is some type of metal hit, then that student would, in private, then be checked by the administrator. And typically 99% of the time, our checks are, do you have anything in your pocket? Why is that hitting metal? And the student would comply with whatever's happening there. So that's our weapons checks. Their officers are not involved with those. They're sometimes asked to be present down the hallway, but we, we don't want any officers involved with our random searching as for, as far as for weapons. But they are in the area just in case, if you will, for that purpose. Questions?
Do you get reports from every school, every time that there's a random?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have said, yeah. Every time there is a random search, we have a standardized ISO form search report. And that search report would be for the random searches. If, if the principal decided there was cause and suspicion and need to search a room on a wide scale and many students in there was cause to do that, they would do that search form for that also. Or for our Drug Prevention and Deterrance Program, which is our canines. We also use that form for the same purpose. And those forms are submitted to my office for review and, and tracking.
Do you use the same randomizer for the, for the drug one?
So for drugs, it's, we use the canine.
Right, but do you use the, to identify which classrooms and students, do you use the same?
Yes, actually, no, I'm sorry. What we do in that case is that we use the randomizer for areas of the building for hall lockers.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we limit that to hall lockers, we have not moved, you know, there are some that want to, that believe that we should do this and that we should do classrooms and have kids come out and sniff the backpacks. We have not done that, we're not at that place yet. That I believe would be with your authority, not my, under my authority to do something like that. And then, and so, but we use the canines for lockers. So what we use the randomizer for, selection. If there is many lockers, like 3,000 lockers, they'll select an area. What the procedure calls for is that search is done within 20 minutes. The canine, in other words, the law enforcement canine would come to the building and during a classroom period, the canine would come to the, and the administrator would then coordinate the area off or call the hole in place and a temporary hold. And that, that would happen within the 20 minutes of that search. That's what we allow and allow only for that. So that would mean a dog could probably search about maybe four, sniff. And they'd get tired of sniffing for 20 minutes. But that's their job. And they would sniff probably about 300 to 500 lockers during that timeframe.
And the SRO officer's not involved in that either, or are they?
Only as a monitor, only as a monitor in that situation. So if there is a sniff and the sniff indicates, the canine officer would, would advise us where the dog indicates. And that, that would be a very specific indication, not a range. We don't go, okay, two lockers left, two lockers right. No, it's only that, where that indicates. We would mark that locker, then the school administrator would search that locker for any possible contraband. If there is contraband found, at that time, we would, we would, obviously, we would report it to the officer if it was an illegal contraband of drugs or a weapon. And that's the way we would handle that. But we'd first conduct our own investigation.
I recall hearing about a time that a room was searched, backpacks were specifically searched per backpack. Now I don't want to go into specifics, but can you describe perhaps the circumstance under which that might occur?
Under a weapon search, as we do check backpacks. So I, I failed to leave, put that in, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. The, the, during the weapon search, not the canine search, but the weapon search, when we're scanning students on outside, the administrator's monitoring with the teacher the backpacks in the room. And then when a student comes in, the backpack is also checked for weapons while in the student's presence.
Even if there was no metal found on the student?
Yes, we check backpacks. We check backpacks also.
Have a problem like that.
Can I ask you a question? You were talking about with the wand, right? You check backpacks with the wand?
No, we physically check the backpacks. Because all backpacks have zippers and metal buttons and, I mean, would, the wand would always hit on a backpack, unless the backpack was made of plastic and it didn't have a button or a zipper. Sorry, I'm being a little.
So maybe we could get a summary, it's not in detail, but a summary of what random searches took, took place and when and, and what was found, maybe a spreadsheet, something like that.
Oh, it's possible, yeah.
Well, do you currently enter them into a spreadsheet or you just collect the forms and review them?
We started.
I'd hate to implement something that's going to generate a lot more work for John, who's already very busy.
It, it would, I don't have any interns last summer or this summer. We're not hiring anybody, but I have a couple of volunteers. I might, you know, so that we stack the reports up and we put them in a file. So I could translate that data into a spreadsheet, it will take some time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reluctant to create more work too. I was sort of hoping you might be doing that already, but is there an easy way for you to make a summary that wouldn't require a lot of extra work?
Not without being accurate, I would want to be very accurate.
Okay.
How does the rest of the board feel?
I'm assuming that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm assuming that when we're talking about, and I'm, Ms. Ward, is that we're talking about historically that these random checks would be taken? That you would find out, or that we would find out about that?
Yes, yes, so I'm, and I'm not speaking, make a, make a spreadsheet of what took place in the, in the past, I'm talking about going forward, of course.
Oh, sure, okay, going forward, that, that's a little bit different.
Well, as long as it's, it's, keeps the element of the determinant of randomness and the surprise factor, I guess that's what you're trying to accomplish by saying, you mentioned the statistics where it went down from, I think, 50% or whatever, down to 30%, give or take. And that's the fact that there is going to be random searches. And I think that's a good thing, and we, we just can't be forewarned about that, nor can anybody, and still have the same impact.
And yes, I believe that exactly in, in human behavior, when you are more random in those cases, they more, a person might make a decision not to do something to get caught. That's not going to catch everything by any means. Your alternative is having metal detectors at the door and every kid searched every time. With 60 doors in the building, your cost factor is going to go up quite a bit.
Melissa?
So, and Mr. Hirsch, you've given updates to CAC before. This is not the first time that I've heard you speak about how random searches are conducted because you've, you've given that presentation to us, I think, a couple of years ago at CAC. And you've also updated the board, I think, with a very similar kind of presentation that you gave to CAC. I don't know when the last time that was. But this is data that, when you did have interns, I'm assuming, you did collect this data and you had statistics that you gave us about what, you know, how the, the, the number of weapons had gone down when you first implemented the program. So you were keeping statistics at that point, correct?
What the stats I'm reporting are, the information, the student information, the infinite campus reports, when a, when a behavior event of weapons is entered.
Okay.
So when that behavior event of weapons is entered in the student information system, yes, I track that very closely.
Okay.
Weapons mean all kinds of things. Most like, mostly weapons can be an indication that there's a lot of bullying going on in school, so kids are self-protecting themselves for some reason in their minds. So very, watching that closely. But those are information, the weapons offenses themselves. The searching and how often we're searching, it has been sporadic where administrators in schools aren't doing the six a month, and they didn't do it this month, and they didn't do it this month. And maybe that month they've done three. So, and then, and we actually see the numbers actually kind of increase that you see a few more weapons. But we're talking ones and twos and threes and the numbers and changes and difference in, in each year.
Okay, so those, when you were reporting, like when you gave the report to CAC, was that just weapons that were discovered in school because there was an incident, or were they weapons that were discovered during the search?
Uh, they could be either.
Either, okay.
They could be there.
So I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the fact that you are giving these reports, you know, that you are giving these reports, you know, on a fairly consistent basis, right, to the board and to people that ask you for it, to parent groups that ask you for it. So I don't see the need to get a report from you every single time that there's a search. I think that that's a rather cumbersome approach to what we're trying to do here and the results that you're trying to get from doing those searches.
I'm not familiar with the reports you're referring to. That might be fine, and I'm not suggesting every time either. I'm sort of asking for a summary of this many were done at this school. So if that exists, that would be helpful.
Well, no, Mr. Hyderside has come, yeah, he's come to CAC. I think you've come maybe once every other year. You've come to CAC to give an update on safety and security.
And what you're referring to is the incidents of out-of-school suspensions and behavior events that are entered when a weapon is at school. It's not the number of searches we've conducted, random searches that were conducted in schools, and how many at the school, and how many in that school. It's been incidents, behavior incidents, when it occurred. There was a weapon found in school by an administrator, and a student was involved with that offense. Just...
Right, yeah, yeah. But thank you for that clarification, because it's not, we weren't getting statistics on, you know, we did a search this week and that week and this week at the school. I don't know that that information... I don't know what it serves to have that information out there. If we're consistent on, or if we're intent on doing random searches, then, you know, we need to have that randomness protected.
I'm suggesting after the fact, not predictive, but after they were done.
And I guess I'm questioning, what is that information going to tell us? Because we know they're being done. I'm more concerned with the results of them and how they are being effective in accomplishing what we are going, trying to accomplish. And I'm not sure that I know that, you know, Elgin High had this many, and Streamwood had this many, and Bartlett had that. I'm not sure what that information is going to help me with as a board member.
And I would agree. I mean, I, I'm interested to know the results of those on some summary level, to see if our safety program is doing what we need it to do. But I don't need to be notified every single time that we do a search. I'm not, I don't, I wouldn't gain anything by that. There's no valid information there for me.
Well, I think from what you said, Mr. Hyderside, then we're not getting a summary of those either, so I think, correct?
A summary of the searches themselves? No, you're not getting that.
So Ms. Owens, you're saying you would like a summary?
A summary of the results of, so on a yearly basis, you know, in 2016, we found X number of weapons. And 2017, you know, there were whatever X.
Either way, that's going to generate work for John. He's got to go through, I'm sorry, Betrayed Hyder Shite. He's got to go through every report, other than just giving it. He's got to go through it, he's got to disaggregate it. He's plugged something into a spreadsheet to say, "Okay, this weapon was found on this date in this school, and that's the reason why." And Infinite Campus had notes that a weapon was found here. Otherwise, it could just be that a student's walking into the school and self-reports a knife on their person, which was also entered into Infinite Campus.
And we've had situations where a student will say that when we come in for the classroom search, they'll kind of excuse themselves and say, "I need to talk to you out in the hallway. Hey, I think I have a pocket knife in my backpack. I forgot it because I was out last night," something like that. And that's happened, that's factual. So those incidents are there.
So if we want to break down the data, we'd actually have to have somebody, I mean, John would actually have to take time to figure out how to filter through the forms that are reported to him and provide the board some sort of that update.
I don't know that I am talking about creating more data.
No.
I'm talking about what he's already updating us on. And I know that isn't specific to random searches, but it does include random searches. And that's what I'm...
Yeah, I have one question, though. So one of the things you said was, when you started random searches, you had a 48% drop in weapons being brought to school.
Yes.
So how many years ago was that? Was that?
That was 2009 to '10. That was actually, I'm sorry, 2007, '18 to 2009.
Because I would hope that there is some way to measure its effectiveness. Is it something we still need to be doing? Now, I don't want to create more work, but if there's not a, some type of evaluation built into this process, at least even if it's every few years, of some type of evaluation of, is this still worth doing? Are we having a steady decrease in weapons? Are we holding it flat? If we stop doing random searches, is it going to go back up? I mean, you know, we can say anecdotally what we think it might be, but if we're not measuring, and it's been seven years, I don't, that's something to consider. I don't mean that I want you to do it, and I want you to have all this extra work, but I would want to know that this is still valid.
I'd be happy to report whatever the board would pleasure to report.
And it's not urgent for me. It's more of just thinking, being prudent, thinking down the road.
The only way to see that is to kind of go back and measure all the other searches to compare it to the data that you see in the behavior events each year to see if those, you know, the number of, so what you're asking for is, it is quite a bit of analysis.
It is, you know, so maybe it's at the 10-year mark. We decide we're going to do that. I don't know, I just, I don't, I'm not a fan of continuing programs without some type of evaluation, or at least getting some measure of our weapons, numbers of weapons going down, up, or staying steady. And you have to measure it somehow. And I'm assuming you anecdotally have that, but...
I do report that to the board. When I come to the board, I report the behavior events for weapons. And you see that a year it was 45, then it was down to 38. Last year it was down to 29.
So if it continues to go down, I'm good. I mean, that's, I would want to know those numbers, yeah.
Right, and that's the numbers. I report to you the behavior events of those incidents. If you'd like me to combine that with the number of searches we do, broken down by school.
I don't need all that. I don't need all that extra work. I just, I would like, you know, as long as I hear you're measuring it in some way, and you're seeing positive results, I'm okay with that.
And I would agree with that. That's, it's the behavior incidents that I want to see. It's that number that I want to see. I don't, I don't need to see the individual search data. That's not, I want to see the results. You know, I want to see what is ultimately, the goal is to bring weapons, the number of weapons brought into schools down, right? And I want to make sure that we are, exactly. So I want to make sure that we are on track to do that. That's what we are, you know, that's a goal. We need to measure that goal.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we kind of okay with the reporting as it is? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is work session, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under work session are bids and proposals. The first is a proposal for curriculum instruction with ST Math Gen 5 software licenses. Administration recommends approval of the proposal with Mind Research Institute in the amount of $507,504 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to Title I funds, and it is included in the budget for the 2017-2018 year. And if you have questions, Mr. Phelps has joined the dais, as well as Ms. Ward.
Are there any questions?
Is there a login for this, so I can view the curriculum or view the resource?
Sir, I can, I believe we included a login.
It's on the board.
It's on the bottom under executive content.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't see that.
Any other questions? Prepare to be frustrated, Ms. Ward. There's no words, it's not language-dependent. I had trouble using GG when I first started.
Okay. Is this to help with Eureka Math?
Actually, it's an intervention and/or an enrichment for math in general. So it aligns, it would support Eureka, but we tested several different math interventions last year, and we have a couple of schools that have been using ST Math and had some really good gains. And so it can be used as an intervention and/or an enrichment.
And is it like touch math? Because I know we voted on that before. It's another intervention in addition to touch math?
So this math actually goes all the way up through algebra, whereas touch math tends to be much more computational-based. It's very similar to fast math, and then it helps kids that aren't necessarily great at computation, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. The nice thing about ST is it goes all the way through algebra.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our next under-work session are contracts over $25,000. The first is a contract renewal for Human Resources with IMED Vision Insurance. Administration recommends approval of a four-year contract renewal with IMED Combined Insurance Company of America in the total amount of $2,364,860 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund. The annual cost of $591,204 will be included in the budgets for the 2017-18 school year, 2018-2019, 2019-2020, and 2020-2021 school years. And that's a tongue-twister, if you ever want to try that.
Are there any questions?
I assume this is required by contract with our employees? Yes?
It is currently part of our full benefits package, but it is a separate policy from the health.
Okay.
Since this is a four-year contract, how much has it, has there been any escalation from a prior contract period?
6.3% increase, but we did have a four-year rate guarantee, so it hasn't gone up in the past 40 years. And we have had, it's a fully insured product, and we've had very high utilization among our employees, so...
Any other questions?
And I should have noted, Beth Berg joined Bruce Phelps at the dais. So thank you for being here, Beth.
Okay, thank you.
Our final contract over $25,000 is a contract for Specialized Student Services with Gorbold Behavioral Consulting, Inc. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Gorbold Behavioral Consulting, Inc. in the amount of $75,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant funds, and it is included in the budget for the 2017-18 school year. If the board has additional questions, join Mr. Phelps's Dr. Satterwhite.
Are there any questions?
So I had asked previously to the meeting, because this is for an organization that provides ABA services. Are we, is this for an actual consultancy? So the people are going to come in and work with our staff members on different techniques? Or are we actually going to be having the people from Gorbold actually working with the students?
They will be working with our staff on the different techniques, but they will be modeling with the students,